Do you all want to speak, or do you just want representatives to speak? Stephanie Toothaker, you're the representative of Miami Beckham United LLC.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Stephanie Toothaker, on behalf of Miami United Beckham LLC and Inter Miami. And no, not everybody, we don't all need to speak. I would, and I'm not going to make a presentation, this is not the time for presentations. We are very pleased to offer this unsolicited proposal. And I do just want to introduce who's with us this evening, in case you did have any questions. Pablo Alvarez, who is the Vice President and General Counsel of Inter Miami. George Moss Jr., who is the Director of Special Projects for Inter Miami. Paul McDonough, who is the Sporting Director for the MLS team, the USL team, and also the Academy teams. Kurt Schmidt, who's the Technical Director for Inter Miami. Nikki Bedalik, who's the Director of Soccer Operations. Jürgen Menke, who's the Chief Business Officer. And Dennis Sprinkle, who's the Vice President of Human Resources. We are all here to answer questions, and we are very excited to submit this proposal. And we look forward to speaking with the Commission in greater detail at a later period of time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. So Stephanie Toothaker, Mr. Menke, Mr. Alvarez, and Mr. McDonough. Did you want to say anything? You want to add to any of that? Okay. Because as Ms. Toothaker indicated, this really isn't the time to make a public presentation. So, okay, so we have some other people who'd like to speak. And you have three minutes in which to do that. And I'll call you up. Alex Stanikoff. Alex Stanikoff, followed by Wes Harden, followed by John Millage.
First of all, thank you for allowing us to speak today. Good to see you all. I just have a few brief comments about this.
Could you kind of speak into the mic?
Sorry. Is that better?
Pull it up.
Pull it up towards you. There you go.
How's that?
Great, much better.
I'm a partner in the FXC Football, which is our group as an opposing bid for this property at Lockhart. And I just wanted to share with you folks just a few things that we believe in about this project, and why we're excited to bid on it. We believe, without getting into too much details right now, as you said, it's maybe not the best time for this, but we do believe that we are providing the best solution for the site in the city of Fort Lauderdale. We believe we're presenting a proposal that's based on the input from the folks in Fort Lauderdale, the City Commission, and all the stakeholders that are interested in Lockhart Stadium. We believe in 100 percent public access. We believe in the Mayor's vision and others' vision of creating a world-class soccer and youth sports destination at the site. We believe in an open and objective review of our proposal on its merits. We strongly believe that our proposal is the best for the entire city of Fort Lauderdale. And we believe further in a Fort Lauderdale-focused project for the site. And finally, we believe in the historical significance of Lockhart Stadium. And just one thing that we don't believe in is, we don't believe that, maybe contrary to public opinion, that we are the underdogs. We do believe that we have a very strong proposal, and we look forward to you all considering it.
All right, great. Thank you so much. Wes Harden, followed by John Millage. Did you both want to, pass? Mr. Millage, you want to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. John Millage, Attorney for FXC Football. You had a workshop late last year, and what we heard from the public, we heard a number of issues, and I just kind of want to go down the list of the things I heard. One, that the Lockhart Stadium should be preserved, has historic merit. That the people want a destination for all the residents of the city to enjoy. That the destination should have multiple amenities. That there needs to be more youth ball fields that are available for the public's use. And finally, which is very important, the project should be consistent with the vision of the Uptown group. So we believe we can deliver on all these features. Plus, we can bring a USL professional franchise, that when they play in that stadium, there'll be thousands of people that will show up each match. So we think that's very important. So we ask you to move forward with a level playing field, moving forward, that there isn't any preference indicated by the Commission, that you're favoring any proposal, that all you're doing is considering this proposal that's been filed, and you have an open mind on other proposals. You're certainly aware of ours, inasmuch as we were part of the prestige proposal previously. And so we just hope that, on a moving-forward basis, that it would be clear that everybody's on a level playing field. Whatever time period that the Commission indicates, we're happy to compete. So thank you very much.
All right, great. Thank you. John Reynold, followed by Alan Bogdanoff. You wave. Senator Bogdanoff, are you here? You want to speak?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, and I'll be very brief. I just wanted to kind of ask you all, as you make your comments, if you would kind of address, when you talked about ranking, because this is not a standard RFP, where you put it out on the street, and you kind of have the criteria, and we do all of the little, you know, ranking, it's kind of, to some degree, be subjective, based on, hopefully, what the Commissioners want, what the stakeholders want, and what the community wants. So I would ask that perhaps maybe you all can address what you're looking for, and what kind of criteria you're thinking of in terms of ranking the projects. But I represent FXC, and I'm very excited about having the opportunity to work on this, and work with you all as we kind of evaluate the proposals. But thank you.
Great, thank you. Art Sights, followed by Carrie Goldberg. You can't text and speak at the same time.
Good evening, City Commission. Art Sights. This property has been recently grossly neglected. It's been blighted. I mean, it's, you've seen the pictures in the paper. It's in horrible shape. It just seems to be a pattern. You let things go to hell, and then suddenly, somebody appears that's going to save it. And then you have, fortunately, now we have at least two people. There was a point where the city spent about $12 million, I think, to buy this property. I was there, when the strikers were there. I photographed George Best. I photographed a lot of celebs that were there. The company that was involved, recreational design and construction, in a $76.2 billion, million-dollar, one-bid deal on the RDC. RDC did on the Aquatic Center. Then was working with Schittelbaum. Schittelbaum had some problems, and they got sued in federal court, because there was only one bid. Same situation that happened with the Aquatic Center, for the Broward County Inspector General. And that was after the ruling in federal court. It looked like they might have a water-themed park there. Which, given the location on I-95, given that you've got 70 acres there, my concern is politics. I mean, it just always seems that somebody appears that wants something for as little as they can get it. I guess it's called business. In Miami, you had a famous British football player, soccer player, that's, you know, he's, I think he got kicked around from one side of that city to the other before, I think he's finally landed with a proposal, and this is part of it. You could spend $2,000 a day, and get Disney World consulting, or other consultants, to tell you what you could do with 70 acres. You could ask the College of Architecture for ideas. You could ask the universities for ideas and other alternatives. Instead, here we are with two proposals, and I would hope that whatever you end up with, it has public access, of course. It should be multipurpose. Multipurpose is something that, you guys don't know what multipurpose means. I mean, just look at what you've done to the Aquatic Center recently. It's really a putrid history that the city has had on doing sweetheart deals. I just hope this isn't another one.
Okay, thank you, sir. Carrie Goldberg.
Good evening, Commissioners. Carrie Goldberg, 6300 Northeast First Ave. I am the President of Envision Uptown, Inc. That is my capacity tonight. First of all, we're thrilled that this came about, when we saw it pop in the newspapers. I would say that all of our Executive Committee phones started blowing up. So we're thrilled, we're thankful of the applicant that's, you know, put the resources forth to come forward. But what we'd like to see is, and is a little more time taken here. We've spent over six years establishing Uptown. Some of you know, some of you don't know. Some were involved and still sitting up, were sitting up here back then when we started this, and others are brand-new. Together with the city, the other agencies, and the over 70,000 employees, which is more than anywhere else in this county, that sit in Uptown. That's what we represent. We have spent countless man-hours and time reviewing this area, which includes FXC and this field, these fields. Yes, we wanted them to go back to aviation, but you know what? We've come to grips with it. You guys don't want to do that. So we're here with what we've got. We need to get more time. As the attorney told you, you have up to 120 days to review this. The reason we're asking you to take longer...
No, 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 no. We have from 21 days to 120 days...
Except others, I'm sorry.
Right, and then we don't have a time limit.
Got it. You've got 120 days to accept.
Right. And that will give the community the opportunity to meet with your Commissioner and staff, and to make that, go through that vetting process that you spoke about earlier.
Right. So what we'd like is, not only for us to meet with you, because we have not gotten the opportunity to meet with some of you, to sit down and really go through what the vision is up there, and what we've spent all this time working towards on, but also for the applicants, because it's only fair to them that they sit down, and they really understand what the vision is, and what we want to see up there for the area. It'll save them time, save them money, and hopefully produce something that not only the community will be proud of, but actually, the entire region will be proud of. So we're looking for you guys to do, give 60 days. It'll give time for us to get with you, and for them to get with us. I know we can, you guys can do the 120. 60 days is plenty enough time to get it done. So that's our take on it, and then we'll be involved in this process as we go down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, it's not limiting the time in which we have to review it, it's just limiting the time in which proposals can be submitted. Okay, is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this item? There being none, may I move to closed public hearing?
Some moved afterwards.
It's been moved, seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson.
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas.
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman.
Yes.
Mayor Trent Ellis.
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. Commissioner Moritas.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. We really appreciate the opportunity to partner with one of you all, with someone that wants to come to the table with us. It could be another bid out there. Just a couple of comments in response to what people are saying. I, myself, I do represent District 1, and I've met with a lot of residents, I've met with the Uptown group as well, with Carrie, and a lot of the businesses. My conversations with Uptown mostly have been around the LUPA, the Land Use Plan Amendment, and my understanding of that was that we're getting 2,000 new residents in the area. So my focus, really, for the 64 acres at Lockhart Stadium, was thinking, what will those 2,000 residents want to do? And so for me, I thought, I would like a great park to go to. So when I saw the space, I was thinking, at first, I'd like 64 acres of a park. So that was where I initially started this whole thought process. A few great possibilities have come to us, and I've been open to listen to them, and talk about the possibilities of a partnership that would be a good fit for both of us. But in terms of the businesses in the Uptown area, I appreciate what you all are doing. I really do, and I think that whole area is going to boom. And like I said, I have spent time, I really, I, to understand the vision of Lockhart Stadium, I've probably spent more time with the residents in my district. And every time I bring it up, people are really excited about the possibility of some park space. Like, what would it look like if I went to soccer practice at the end of the night, my kids are practicing, and what would I want to do with my younger children? Maybe they play on the playground. Maybe, maybe if I'm a mom and I worked all day, I'd want to take a walk, you know, around a perimeter of the property to get some exercise at the end of the day. So as the district representative, representing the people who live there, and sometimes people will say, this isn't close to anything, and I remind them, I actually live nine minutes from Lockhart Stadium, so it is close. And when I want to go to something recreational, I actually have to go to Pompano, and Pompano Park. So when I see a vision of, if you have been to Pompano Park, they have the amphitheater and a lot of green space. So I'm going to tell you, that's where I'm starting. And I also want to say, in terms of a timeline, that we've been working on this for years, not days. I mean, I've been working for mostly the past week with the two different groups who have brought their proposals, and like I said, I appreciate both of you all. But this has been open for years, and we've had different versions, you know, come to us with Schittelbaum and Premier. So people have known that this is a possibility. So I think the 21 days, personally, for me, I'm comfortable with that, and I'm sorry, you know, if, like you said, you know, Carrie, you all want an extension, but I think in 21 days, we can go to the businesses and talk about it. And I would like to actually defer to the two groups, and think if that's enough time for you to communicate your desires to the Uptown community. You know, I do have to say, I'm all for business, and this is going to sound really bad, and probably going to lose some campaign donations, but the people that own most of the businesses in Uptown, they really don't live there. Because I ask, every single time I go to Uptown, and I ask the different businesses, maybe Don Campion, who kind of lives in my district, actually, at Banyan, but every time I go there, I'm like, where do you all live? Where do you all live? Where do you all live? Because I want to make sure I'm representing everybody. Like I said, the business interests, and the people that live there. But at the end of the day, I really represent the people that live there. So that's probably where my bent will be. And I want to work with both entities, I really do, and I'm sorry if that's not maybe what you want to hear, but I'd like to move this forward. It is an eyesore. I spent, you know, an hour and a half out there last Friday with Fire. Thank you for giving me the tour, and letting me in, you know, touching the stadiums, walking it, seeing the vision, seeing the property, seeing what it would look like. Once again, mom, two kids, raise my kids here, art, we'd have bike trails all over, if we could. I do appreciate your persistence on that. We're going to have some trails around this property, too, with whatever group comes, I can guarantee you. So that's, that's where I sit. I think the timeline, I'd like these two groups to get moving, to get excited, to get going. It's, like I said, it's been sitting there for years. We want to see it activated. I think whatever group will come in, will activate the community, the business community at Uptown. I think they're, you know, both great proposals. And I think the feedback from the community will help shape and determine in what direction we want to go. I'm going to say again, and I've said it to both groups, I want to, I do want to preserve park space. I just do. It's the last 64 acres we have in the city of Fort Lauderdale. Does everybody realize that? It's like the last. And we have the opportunity to decide what we'd want to do with it. Once again, I said I'd make the whole thing a park from the beginning, until I kind of came around, saying, okay, maybe there's a possibility to play with some of it, but I don't want to give away all of our space. I really don't, and I want to consider the people that live there and need some more green space. You know, I tweeted an article recently from, you know, National Publication, great cities have great parks, you know, period. District 1 is underrepresented in park space in general. I know Phil could confirm that, and so we'd love to see some park space. Once again, I do feel like 21 days is appropriate, as long as both groups feel like it's appropriate in terms of other people coming to the table to bid. They've known about this for years.
Okay, great. Anybody else have any comments?
Yeah.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Thanks. Couple comments. One, just in terms of what I think is the best use for this facility, I agree with Commissioner Moritas. I think public use, I think whatever, you know, team or organizations are there, I think public access, we, our high schools used to play football there, several of the public high schools, I think that's important, to have that opportunity for them to be there, to play, engage. So I really want, even the stadium itself, being accessible for those kind of events. I think good access to the fields is really important for our young people as well, from around the city. So that's really important to me. This is something, just speaking for District 4, so kind of the southern portion of the city, you know, kind of, and I brought this up last night at my District 4 meeting, and it's really something we haven't thought a lot about in District 4, at least many of the folks that were there last night. We just haven't kind of thought about, hey, what's the best use for this, and what would you like to see there, and what are some ideas? And so we started having that discussion last night, but I just haven't had the opportunity to really have full discussions with many of the neighborhoods. And because this is such a massive piece of city property, I really want to make sure we're having some time to engage with our neighbors, wherever they live, to make sure that their, you know, use of their property is the best use. So for the next, you know, basically 30 days, a lot of us are going to be focused on bond issuances, and education, and the election coming up on March 12th. So that's where I really would like a little bit more time, just to be able to articulate, to be able to invite folks to come to HOA meetings, to share ideas, to get kind of the best...
But we're not, again, I think there's a misunderstanding. We're not limiting our review of the applicants for 21 days. We're just opening the window for other applicants to submit ideas and proposals, and we don't have, we could take two months, three months, or whatever, in order to take it around the community, so...
So my understanding of the bid problem, and correct me if I'm wrong, because you've been doing this much longer than me, is that as these entities think about, what would they like to propose to the city, they are going to benefit from being engaged with the neighbors to submit the best proposal, right? That the neighbors would like the most, that's most appealing.
Well, I think, I think that Carrie said, you know, this thing has been going on for years, six years now, as to trying to devise a master plan for the Uptown area. So it's not new to the community that this process has been going on. I mean, there's been a lot of visioning. I was part of some of the visioning process early in my return to the Commission, so I see what you're saying, but I don't see how, you know, a visioning process in the next, even the next 60 days, is going to culminate in an articulable, articulable proposal that is any different than what we've already come up with for the area. I mean, what do you think, Commissioner Moritas? Would you, do you want to extend this longer?
Well, I think, like you said, we have been having this conversation for years. Right now, we're just saying, now we're going to say, you have until 20 more days, 21 more days, as, you know, in addition to the six years we've already been working on it, to get your final proposal in. But, you know, I've talked to, you know, the other, I talked to you all months ago about this, so, you know, that was even...
Yeah, and that's where, I guess, I'm a little slower, I guess, as it were, so I haven't, this is a first, I've met with these folks, either side, so...
Well, I think we're just saying, first of all, it has to be a pretty substantial player to even come to us with the funds and resources to even have this conversation. So they have been analyzing this for years, right? We've had different proposals, Schittelbaum, Premier Park, someone else could have come after Schittelbaum. So they've known about it. Now we're just saying, get your ducks in a row within 21 days, so that we can move this process forward. So I think if someone was out there, and they really wanted to submit something, they would have done it already, because they all heard about it last Monday, when it hit this paper, right? So somebody with the financial wherewithal to actually be a partner with us would have already been talking to us. And I'll back up and say, they have been talking to us. I mean, Chris, how many people have we talked to, this manager's office talked to about Uptown?
Well, I've talked to more than a handful of groups that, you know, many of them just want us to renovate the facility so that they can use it. And at that point, you know, at this point, that's not funded. So those have been sort of short conversations, but this is, these are the two groups that have, that have really engaged with enough of a plan and financial backing to submit a proposal.
Yeah.
Actually, also, I did want to say, Vice Mayor, I think it actually works to our advantage to do it within the 21 days, because then we can use that information to help in the final push for the, you know, the education piece, for the bond issue, I think, for the parks, if we were able to say, and look what else we're doing, and we'll be augmenting with whatever it is we do. I think it's, I think it adds an extra excitement to the bond issue, actually.
And I do think the bond, when we did, you know, earmark some funds for Lockhart, I think earmarking that money kind of showed some possible partners, that we are serious about this project as well, and we want to commit to it financially, and in terms of our land. So I think just stating that in this whole bond has helped, you know, precipitate these proposals that we're getting. So I think, I think the timing's right, I think it's great. I would be, like Carrie even said, we've had, we've had the executive airport come to us and say they'd like to expand, and I think as a Commission, we moved in a different direction. So the groups who could have come to us, or would have, are probably all in the room.
And to that point, though, I think city staff can report to us whether or not, even if we committed any or all of these acreage to sporting facilities and parks, whether that would in any way crimp the expansion plans of the folks that operate at the airport. My understanding, just anecdotally, has been that there's still plenty of room for airport expansion, notwithstanding the unavailability of these, of this acreage. So I would not want to put a boundary around our airport for future expansion. I don't think this, any one of these proposals would do that. All right, so the whole point of this, of this item on the agenda is to decide whether or not we are wanting to establish a, first of all, accept the unsolicited proposal, and establish a window of 21 days in which to receive other proposals. So do I hear a motion on the floor?
Mayor, could I just say one more thing?
Someone, wait, someone, I want to correct myself. Someone introduce the resolution.
Introduce.
Okay. Yes, what would you like to say?
I did want to just say that this topic did come up at my pre-agenda meeting last evening, and people were looking forward to the proposals, but they also did make it very clear that they wanted to make sure that whatever was done there would incorporate some open green space, like Commissioner Moritas had talked about before she was even considering any of these other projects. But they wanted to make sure that that was part of the mix, that they felt that that was really important, to have that kind of open...
Again, that's all part of the vetting process after we receive the...
Putting it on the record.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, as well, just before you move forward.
Yes, Mr. City Manager.
Alan, so I think we should be, he is down there, I think. So I think we should be clear as to when the 21-day, if they do vote for 21 days, when that starts, because that doesn't start tonight.
It's, no, it starts after the initial publication. So we have to publish one a week for two weeks, obviously in a local newspaper, as well as the Florida Administrative Register. So the 21 days doesn't start until that initial published date, so there's really nothing to include within the, specific dates to include within the resolution, because until we know the date certain of those initial publications, that's when the 21 days will start counting.
We are prepared to start that process. I just wanted to be clear that nobody counts 21 days from tonight, and thinks that that's the date.
So when do you think those publications are actually happening?
The resolution directs the clerk to do that essentially now, but again, once we, we're dealing with a third-party newspaper, so it's really up to them. I mean, we can make requests, but until we have an actual date certain, there's no date to really insert within the resolution, but it should be very shortly.
Probably a week or 10 days after today.
That's what I was going to say.
Do you have any sense, Jeff, as to how quick the advertisement will happen?
Wendy, do you have any idea as to how many days after today it'll take to publish the announcement?
Wendy, if we publish, if we sent this to the newspaper tomorrow, when would it be first published?
Bless you.
No, the paper first, yeah. Yeah, so we could have this pretty fast to Sentinel, and then we just set up an account with the Florida Administrative Register. Today, how long would that take, Wendy?
So by Friday or Monday.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then the only other, the only other provision is not a publication, but we actually require to send letters to the affected local jurisdiction. However, how that's defined in the statute essentially is county municipality or special district in which all or a portion of a qualifying project is located. So I contemplate that would most likely just be Broward County, but that, that wouldn't trigger the 21 days, the actual publication does.
Any other questions?
Yeah, one last question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we need to wait until the end of the 21 days to maybe bring these two proposals to the community, to be fair, if there are other people out there? Or can we ask them to start making some presentations, and maybe at town hall to start educating some people? What do you think?
Well, I don't think city staff has really vetted either proposal yet, so I would hate for you to make a false step, and make a false representation.
I would recommend for that period to end. You want all proposals on the table. When they start presenting, you don't want to give anybody an edge by starting earlier. And again, we will have both internal and external review of these proposals. There's more data that needs to come in. So I would wait until that period is over. We can do our internal vetting and review, but outreach and so on and so forth.
We can't actually by statute start negotiating with anyone, obviously, until they're ranked, so...